of the whole meeting for January 2.
Okay.
Okay, welcome everyone to this committee of the whole meeting. Oops, sorry, let me turn that off. For January 21st, 2025. First thing, I'd like to welcome everybody out. We'll start with the committee of the whole approval. Oh, there's no minutes, so we don't even need to worry about that. So we're just gonna go right on to number one. Form-based code discussion. Looks like Zachary Smallwood is not here, so Chad Wilkinson will be presenting, and Mark Morris from BOTA Landscape Planning presenting. You have 30 minutes. Hi, Mark, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good, good to see you. I know, it's true.
Well, thanks for the time. I'm just gonna do a brief introduction. Mark did a great job of planning commission last week. Just giving an update, we had some really good discussion in our planning commission meeting. A lot of good comments from, from planning commissioners and good feedback. So the purpose of today's meeting is just to give you an update of where we're at in the process and show some of the work that's been done. And if you have questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those. So with that in mind, we have 30 minutes. We have about an hour and a half discussion at the planning commission the other night, so we're not gonna have quite that amount of time, but.
Which was really good.
It was a good conversation.
It was really good.
Mark.
Great, thank you, and I appreciate the time today to talk about form-based code again. Since I was here last, we've been working with our steering committee, represented on the committee from this group with Diane and Adam, a few other planners on staff to kind of help to calibrate the form-based code to get us where we, where we need to be. So got a brief presentation, we can go through questions and comments you may have. At this stage, we're kind of finalizing a draft of the code, taking comments, revisions, and all of that, hopefully bringing it back to this group for public hearing and adoption in the next couple of months. So, great, so the form-based code, just as a quick reminder of what we talked about last time, the code is really a different way to regulate development. The form-based code would really only apply to the city center area and is calibrated specifically to a specific location. Form-based code allows for a wide variety of use. So use is less, I guess, less front and center than perhaps you're used to in the past, but it's still a consideration with form-based code. The code update is really just saying, here are kind of the rules of the game for the next 20, 30 years. None of this is, you know, it's not a master plan. It's not saying, here's exactly what's gonna happen. It's just updating the code to more closely align with what's in your general plan, other plans that the city has developed for the city center area. Existing uses and businesses are in no way pushed out when using a form-based code. You may have businesses that have concerns or may ask the question, what does this mean for my business? No one is pushed out by a form-based code. It's really just saying, if a property redevelops, if that business changes drastically as far as the footprint or size or scale, the code would apply, but if someone is here in the city center doing their thing, they can stay as long as, as long as they would like. The city center area that you can see on the map here, currently, this entire area is under your MCCD zone. The entire form-based code would basically replace the MCCD zoning in its entirety. That current zoning under MCCD is kind of broad mixed use. The form-based code is mixed use of a different kind. As you can see from this map, the form-based code divides up the area into even smaller form districts that, again, regulate height, building setback, all of that in a little bit.
We're trying to fix this one and I just cut you guys off, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's, it's fine, it's fine, you're fine.
Some of the surrounding cities around Murray that have been using form-based code in the last, last few years, we have worked directly with Midvale City. They adopted a form-based code in 2019 and have been happy with, with those results. Salt Lake City was the first in the state and other cities have, have kind of adopted those to follow.
Yeah, what's, what size of an area did these cities develop a form-based code for?
Sure, that's a good, that's a good question. The Midvale City code is really just their historic Main Street area. I would say geographically, probably similar in size to what the, this Murray City Center.
Okay, and the other ones are pretty similar to that then?
The others are all over the, all over the map.
Really?
We helped Sunset City adopt theirs the end of 2023. Theirs was a very long area that was kind of their, all of the commercial in their entire city. So that one is a little bit different. Salt Lake City has a few different pockets around the city. They have quite a bit of this city now as far as their commercial that's regulated by form-based code. So everyone's a little bit, a little bit different. We're, we're also currently working with Cottonwood Heights City. They have a few nodes along Fort Union Boulevard that they're developing form-based code for. So code isn't, really, you can develop a form-based code for as large or as small of an area as you would like. Most cities, like Murray, has taken the approach to say, here's an area that we're going to focus on. Usually after a city gets more comfortable with what that process looks like, you might pinpoint other parts of the city that you would want to apply that to. Typically, a form-based code is only applied to a commercial area that has redevelopment potential. You wouldn't ever apply it to like an existing single-family neighborhood just because the change there is, you know, minimal. It's, you know, backyard ADUs and things like that, so.
Chad, have you ever used the form-based code? Were you aware of that?
That Fountainfall City one, right there, I was there when we adopted that, 2016. So yeah, that one's focused on their historic downtown. If you're familiar with the old Main Street they have there.
Yeah, if you're familiar with Fountainfall or Midvale, a lot of it is, okay, we've got some historic structures. How do we align the code so those historic structures are honored, but new development is encouraged that fits in with the, with the context? I've got a few photos here from a couple of months back of Midvale's Main Street. If you're familiar with it, there's some kind of one- and two-story buildings along their Main Street that have been there for many decades. Form-based code was adopted in 2019 and since then, quite a bit of development has come along, particularly on the north end of their historic Main Street. But as you can see, this, you know, this building in the upper left, this is a brand-new building. It uses historic forms, materials, all of the things that you would hope, hope to have in a place where you wanna make sure that new development doesn't feel out of place with the kind of historic character.
How much is Midvale's movement is based upon the change of the form-based code? And how much of it is them as a city attracting or pushing for redevelopment there?
I think a little of column A and a little of column B. They, they developed a redevelopment area for the Main Street area. They had had no new construction on their Main Street, I would say, in a couple of decades. Like, there was not a lot going on. If you go there today, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. Yeah, so the form-based code wasn't on its own. That's not enough of a kind of a carrot to get things going. They also have RDA funds and things like that to kind of encourage, encourage that. So it's a tool, but like other tools, it can be used with, with others.
I don't see any signage.
Signage is, as far as?
Like, what businesses they are. Like, I see a coffee shop.
Sure.
But I don't see what, I mean, is there gonna be signage in the form-based code? Is there not gonna be signage? I mean, I see one up at the very top, but how do you know what businesses?
Sure, that's, that's a good question. This building on the right, this is an apartment building, so I think this is probably the name of that.
Oh, okay.
This building was brand-new. I don't even think it was occupied when I took the photos there, but as you can see here, this ground floor space is all commercial space. So when those are occupied, I think you would see signage up here on the, on that horizontal piece there. So a form-based code definitely includes signage in its regulation in the code as far as the size and type and all of those, all of those things.
And that was one of Jake Pearson's questions.
About?
On last Thursday, was about signage.
Yeah, we had a bit of discussion, it may come as no surprise, about neon signs and marquee-type signs, discussion. Yeah, so that, the signage in Utah is always a hot-button issue, and so we wanna make sure with the form-based code, we're allowing the types of signs we wanna allow and closely regulating those that they don't get too big or too, too obnoxious.
Okay.
The benefit to, to current property owners is really flexibility. The form-based code recognizes that market conditions often drive which uses are going to pencil with any particular development. So if someone comes along, private property owner wants to redevelop, there is a broad category, broad categories that they can use as far as which use would be allowed by the city. The focus really is on where that building is located, how does it address the street, where is, where its primary entrance is located. So those types of things are more closely regulated than use. If you think about the buildings you currently have along State Street, those have changed use many, many times. We want these buildings to be timeless so that if the business changes, the use changes, that building is endlessly reusable rather than a single-purpose building like a Costco, which has very short list of people who can use a building like that.
I have a question, can you go back to the previous?
Sure.
Where, where's the parking? Okay, parking will be for the apartment somewhere in there. But where's the parking on the other?
Sure, that is a good, that is a great question. Typically with a form-based code, the requirement is that parking is located either under the building or behind it.
Okay.
So it's really saying, we, historically, traditionally, a city center has buildings that front the street. They have good transparency, they have doors and windows at that street level, and the parking is located behind. So when we talk about form, that's one of the forms that a form-based code focuses on. It's just making sure that we don't end up with lots of parking along your main streets and the building is far away from the sidewalk.
It would have been nice if you took pictures of what it looked like in the back for parking compared to those buildings.
Yeah.
And how many people could come into those buildings?
Yeah.
The apartment and the other three, I would be curious what the parking looked like in the back. But I can go do that myself, I'll just drive there.
Yeah, and there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of that discussion that we've had with the steering committee as far as parking requirements and all of that. The current, as currently drafted, the form-based code isn't wildly different from what your current parking requirements are for the MCCD zone. So there are a little bit of, some changes to that, but for the most part, those requirements are pretty.
So, Mark, I think we've actually increased the minimum slightly from where it previously was, and there's no max.
Yeah, we've changed a couple of them as far as what by, I think it was by bedroom quantity or something like that, yeah. Typically with a form-based code, what we're trying to do is to make it more predictable for everyone so that the process is clear, whether you're a property owner, whether you're city staff, city council, planning commission, a pretty clear process of approval. Where it would start would be a pre-application meeting with planning staff at the city. The part of the form-based code includes a worksheet that really goes through piece by piece, step by step, that shows here, here exactly what those requirements would be. The applicant would then submit to the city. If the planning staff has review and comments in order to make sure that the proposal meets those form-based code requirements, if those are under certain thresholds, you could have an administrative approval. So we're talking smaller projects, if they meet all of the requirements, could be approved administratively. Most of them are gonna end up in column B over here where they're gonna go through some supplementary review.
I'm a little concerned of that.
Sure.
Small projects can't be approved administratively. Because the public has no input on that.
Sure, well, you would have basically this application process. We can set those thresholds wherever, wherever you're comfortable those to be, those should be. Typically, those projects would be under an acre. They would be projects that are under a certain footprint of a building. They would have to meet all of the, you know, all of the form-based code requirements right out of the gate in order to, to meet that.
So to say it a little bit different way, one of the advantages to a form-based code is because of the structure of the code, you know, you know what you're gonna get, right? So someone could come in and say, this is, this is what the form-based code says this building ought to look like. You know pretty much what you're going to get from that, from that building. So there's not a lot of discretion needed because it's very, the form-based code has those standards in place already.
And that is a, that is a question, you know, that I think we'll continue to, to try to figure out what the right threshold is for that. But one of those, one of the motivators there is to say, hey, if you stick to the form-based code, you get a faster track approval than if you're gonna go through these other processes. So kind of rewarding those who, you know, stick to the code without a lot of, you know, a lot of friction there.
So Paul, I pushed on this too, and one of the things that they explained to me is, it puts us on, puts the burden on us to make sure we create a good code. And if we created the right code, then it can just be administratively handled without. So this is where we need to make sure we're fine to, like, going through it with a fine-tooth comb over the next few months or weeks.
And the idea is if someone does what we'd like them to do, they'll have a quicker process than if someone's doing something.
Yeah, like, we almost need to put on the, the, how can I cheat? And go around this and still stay within the code hat? And then try to plug those holes before we, yeah.
Yeah, and that, I think, we kind of take the same approach to say, okay, if someone is sort of doing it not in good faith, how would they try to skirt these? If that can't be met, then it would go through other, you know, planning commission appeals and things like that. But usually those are addressed by that architectural review.
Can I get you to unplug that just real quickly?
Sure.
Can we plug that into that window to see what happens? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, you're fine.
One of the, as part of this process, one of the things that we've developed is a prototype. Prototype chooses a site in the city center and basically goes through step by step. Here's how that applies to, to this particular project. That prototype can be used endlessly as far as discussions with this group or with planning staff. They may use that prototype to say, hey, this applicant is not meeting this one particular parameter. Here's how that plays out. And using that prototype is kind of an example. Is the setback not exactly what's required or is there something, something in there? So it's meant to be a graphic representation of the.
Explain that in a different way. I think I got it, but explain it in a different way. Like, give me a fictitious example.
Ready for us to change back?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just kind of afraid that might be the apple. That's kind of a weird signal.
Go ahead. That's right, and see what happens.
Go ahead.
Okay, he's got it before here now. Those apples, there's always a bad one.
Always the bad.
Which I don't have.
It's just the heavy stuff. Thank you. This one just came back.
So let's see, so the, the prototype, for this, this particular prototype, we chose the Wells Fargo on the corner of Vine and State. And really just looked at it to say, okay, if this were to redevelop, what sort of parameters would we, would we want to see? So it goes through step by step and shows, okay, here's where the building needs to be located. Here's the minimum footprint of that building. You can see it's kind of pulled up against the street. What do those setbacks look like? Where is the parking located on that site? How, how much of that building is occupied? Kind of minimum occupancy along those street frontages? And then we look at heights, volumes, how does that facade articulate? So that's how the prototype kind of goes through each one of those. So imagine in the future, Zach or his staff come to this group and say, hey, we've got this applicant, they haven't met this one, you know, facade articulation. Here's what that means. It's a lot easier to look at a graphic of a building and say, here's where they're not meeting that, than to put up, you know, here's a bunch of text and we all have to interpret what that means. So the prototype is meant to be a tool that you can use in the future to kind of make sure you're having a discussion that addresses, you know, what is it that the issue, issue at hand? So we chose the Wells Fargo site because it looks, you know, that really is a prime piece of real estate for how much of it is eaten up by parking and, and drive-through. If that were to redevelop in the future, that could be, you know, a really key piece of the city center as far as, you know, being the corner of State, State and Vine.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Yeah, yeah, of course. And the prototype, like I mentioned, it goes through quite a bit of, you know, quite a bit of that, but the, the intent is to make sure you've got something that tells us, okay, when we're talking building heights, when we're talking minimum occupied space in the building, what does that, what does that mean as far as the code, the code requires? You'll see, and we've left use till the very, very end. Use, again, is still part of the code, but it is given a lot more leeway, a lot more flexibility for property owners to determine what is it that's viable for their, for their development. Questions about any of that so far?
When you, a prototype site, upper floors, lodging, would that be apartments or hotel?
That is a great question. So the uses are really regulated by whether they are permitted on the ground floor or the upper floor are not permitted at all. We have some uses that we really are trying to encourage on the ground floors. Upper floors give a little bit more flexibility, whether it's office, hotel, apartments. Those types of uses, we're just trying to get them up off the street. So things that are a little bit more public-facing or engaging would be on the, on the ground floor of those buildings, like in, you know, any, any city center, town center type, type area. So the, the categories are pretty broad, but each, each one of those districts have a little bit different approach to how those uses are regulated in the code. Okay. Great, let's go back to... So the five, five form districts that we have, the Civic Center is kind of around this building here in the middle. We've got a specific form district along State Street. We've got a transit neighborhood form district that's a little bit closer to the tracks and frontrunner stations. The form district on the right there, along Center Street, is what we call residential transition, where you'd wanna make sure that it's kind of a buffer for the single-family neighborhoods to the east. And then the NC Neighborhood Corridor is kind of the, the things that are fronting 4800 South. So each one of those is regulated a little bit differently as far as heights and uses. The intent, again, is to be kind of site-specific as far as what the city would encourage or allow in these areas. One thing I'll mention as part of the Boulevard District, which is along State Street, we do have some additional language in here as far as architectural requirements. Typically, form, form-based code is not an architectural guide. It's not requiring specific types of architecture. The steering committee, as part of that process, it came out that we wanted those buildings along State Street to have a little bit more of a historic feel to them so that they felt like they fit in with the buildings along, along State Street that will stay. And what that looks like is up to interpretation from a property owner, but it would be something that would say, we want new buildings to look like there's, it's harder to tell, this is an old building, this is a new building, to make sure that that corridor feels historically context-sensitive and, and so forth. So those restrictions here are not super prescriptive. They're really saying, here are material types or form of windows and doors that would feel like they were historically appropriate. Did I get that close to, close to right, Adam?
Yep.
Yeah.
I just, one could be framing them up from here.
Yeah.
We seem to use a railroad track on the left, kind of up our margin, except for the very top, it reaches.
What we did here is we basically drew the line where the MCCD zone ends.
Okay.
So if, if there's some, some differentiation there, we can, you know, we can look at that, but that was kind of where we.
I'm just curious, but you follow MCCD pattern, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good with it. And usually it's easiest if you've got a specific zone that you're kind of slopping out one for one for a form-based code. There is a section south of Arlington that is in the MCCD zone, but because you've already gone pretty far down the road with redevelopment of the whole City Hall site, we've left that out of the form-based code just to not muddy up the waters with, with that process at all. But all of the other MCCD zone would be replaced by, by the form-based code.
So they mentioned Arlington. Chad, are we having conversations with them and seeing that they're not, I mean, it's not gonna be imposed on them, right? But any hint or idea that, hey, you gotta play by the rules, you know?
We certainly want them to follow good design principles and they, yeah, we've got some, some design that they've submitted that's, you know, consistent. I don't know that, I haven't looked at it in terms of meeting all the form-based code, but it's, it's got good urban design.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I've seen some of them and nothing that I've seen at least looks like it's wildly out of step with the form-based code, but we didn't wanna get in between all of those discussions, so. Okay, great, any specific questions I can answer?
We have four minutes.
We got four minutes for questions.
My only question is that when I watched the planning meeting is that Jake Pearson had a lot of findings when he delved into it. Are you going to, is the committee and your planning department, you, are you going to look at all of his findings? Okay.
Yeah.
Because some of them were really good.
Sure, yeah, he went through the whole document, which was fantastic, yeah.
He was like, he.
He did his homework.
Was like, wow, I don't even have any of that, but that was good. But anyways, I just am curious if you're gonna look through all of his findings and.
Yeah, we took careful notes and that's one of the reasons we're here is to get this kind of feedback.
Yeah. Just, I would like you to make sure that you go over all of his findings that he had found in his paperwork, so.
Yeah, and that's kind of where we are in the process is to get into really all of the details and say, okay, is this use regulated in a way that you're comfortable with? Or are there other questions that we need to, to address? But at this point, we've got kind of a draft of the full code and are trying to kind of move closer to the adoption.
And then you'll go back to the planning commissioners with?
Correct.
The corrections or things that they brought up? Okay.
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
Well, we have final approval.
Correct, yeah. The planning commission could full well recommend it. It's just a recommendation. Yeah, and you could decide whether you're, you're there yet, so.
Are you, Paul and Pam, are you feeling comfortable? Do you want Mark to come back for more education?
No, I just wanna see what they, what they come up with, your committee, your department, you, with Zach, with Jake's, and then I will feel if I feel good. I mean, because I really thought he really found some things that.
Yeah.
That needs to be looked at.
Indeed, and I think his, his input, I think, was, was really detailed, which is.
Very much so, yeah.
Which is fantastic. I think we'll make sure that he's comfortable with the way that we've resolved those. A lot of it was about, I'd say vending carts, food trucks.
Yeah, I turned in for a few minutes and I saw that there was.
EV, EV stations.
EV stations, yeah.
Yeah, and then.
So what about the EV station?
He, there, there was some language in here about city-required EV stations, which the city doesn't have that requirement yet. And so he didn't wanna include that in here if the city hasn't had that conversation yet. So it's like, we need to make some requirements for EV stations. So that, I think we may take out of the form-based code and then in the future, when the city does have that requirement, we could say, okay, well, here's the language that would line up with what, because that's, that's a big conversation. And so I think he just said, if we don't already have that requirement, let's not have that in the, in the code.
It was a really good conversation that the planning commissioners were having with you and with you and Zach, so.
Yeah, and I think at this point, we just, we wanna make sure that you feel like you understand. You know, currently, you don't have the, your entire code memorized in any way, but I think understanding how form-based code would be a little bit different. You're asking the right questions and kind of feel comfortable with where we're going. The cities that are using it, I'd. The cities that are using it, I'd say they'll inevitably come back and say, okay, we've got something we need to modify in the form-based code. Until you're a couple of years into that, you may not know what's the, you know, what. So this isn't a, this is done for the next 25 years. It's just to say, here's where we're starting.
Right.
We may have some, some edits to this in the future.
So it's a dynamic document?
Indeed. Any permanent changes to the form-based code, as we've talked about, those would come back to the city council. This would never be changed across the board unless the city council has that, the whole adoption process.
Okay.
Excellent.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate the time.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All righty, we're on discussion item number two. Let me turn my pages here. An ordinance relating to land use amends the general plan from office to high-density residential. Amends the zoning map from G dash O, general office to R dash M dash 25, multi-family high-density residential for the property located at 825 dash 865 East 4800 South, Murray City. And it looks like we have David Rogers and Chad Wilkinson, 317.
Thank you. We're hoping that David and I can equal one Zach on this. Not feeling well, but we're going to try to tag team this a little bit and, uh, you know, this is, of course, this property has a long history that, uh, I'm sure the council's aware of a lot of that, that context. But we'll just talk a little bit about it. This, again, this, as we stated, this is a general plan amendment and a zoned map amendment. I'm just going to ask maybe, David, if you can just go through some of these details a little bit, and then we'll just get into a little bit of discussion about it.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is the Lotus Development at, it's between 82, 825, 865 East, 4800 South, right there on 7th, uh, 7th East. And as, as Chad said, it is both a future land use map and a zoning map amendment. So here's a little small overview of the site. It's just under three acres. This, uh, let's see, okay, you guys don't see a mouse from here. The blue outline is the property that we are talking about in particular. And this is what the current zoning is of the parcel. As Chad mentioned, this is a general office zone currently. Um, there's some R18s to the west, there's RM10 to the south, commercial to the north. And the future land use map, um, that's currently distinguishes this as office and then there's residential surrounding it. So that's a little bit of, of background for this parcel. This has, uh, it received a recommended, positive recommendation from planning commission. After it went through some changes, it went to planning commission once with the parcel just to the west. So 787 up on that map, I'm sorry, I don't have like a cursor or anything for you. But that long, thin parcel just to the west was originally included in the application and there was some discussion from residents about that. And so the applicant went back and removed that parcel, planning to keep it R18 and separated it from the, the parcel that they're bringing forward for the general plan amendment and the rezone.
Is that landscaping? Is that why?
It's like, a lot of it's forested. There's a lot, there's a lot of trees there.
Good. Okay.
So this is a, again, again, it's one of those classic questions, uh, you know, when, when is it appropriate to change a general plan designation? You know, one of the things that's pointed out that, that I think is a good thing from our applicant is they did take the time to go talk to the neighboring residents, um, talk about, you know, some of their concerns. That parcel being excluded from this zone change is a direct result of those conversations with those, um, neighbors, um, trying to address those concerns. You know, it's pointed out in the staff report and maybe part of your, uh, previous conversations on the property, but this, this development, and we're sorry we don't have a pointer, but the development there to the southeast, um, although zoned RM10 is actually developed at a higher density. So the densities that are proposed for this particular parcel are consistent with the densities that, that we have. This again has frontage on a very busy street, of course, Van Winkle, uh, you've got 4800 South, you've got that major intersection there. So, you know, appropriate for some type of, uh, a multifamily type of the zoning in that context. Um, you know, again, they've spent a lot of time going to the neighboring property owners. This was, uh, reviewed by the planning commission and did get a unanimous recommendation approval after conversations of, of their concerns and then testimony by some of the public. So, uh, we would also recommend to the city council and recommend approval of this zone change and this general plan amendment.
Would you explain the difference between what they're requesting and what we looked at before, which was RM15? So this is RM25. And we had considered before RM15.
Right.
So...
So it's a higher, it's a higher density zoning, of course. But again, part of it is that we've taken out some property as well that was part of that original proposal. So is there, can you use your cursor on that drawing up there just once?
You can.
That's probably the best thing.
Yeah, no.
So it's a fairly big parcel that's at, uh, number 787 there.
That's a substitute.
So the original, the R115 application that you guys saw included all of this here and was approximately four acres. And by removing this, this is just over an acre. This current area is just, it's just like 2.8 acres, so it's under three acres compared to the original one.
Isn't this usually for TODs? For transit-oriented developments, the 25?
I know in our code, we have specific zones for TOD, like the, um, firefly area has a TOD zone in particular. So I do, this zone is just multifamily. It's not particularly looked at as TOD or mixed use or something like that. It is particularly for residential.
So it's, so explain to me, um, the RM25. What is, what is allowed in RM25?
So again, it's a, it's principally a multifamily zone, it's a residential zone. So it's not a mixed-use zone or a TOD zone. It allows for residential use. Uh, it's, you know, similar zoning to what you see across the street to the south there.
Right.
It allows for things like townhomes, multifamily apartments at a density of 22 units to the acre. There's some things that they can do to get a higher density.
22 units to the acre, yes.
So the 25, that, that 25, uh, unit to the acre is only possible if they do some various, uh, it's a residential incentive, a density incentive bonus to do various changes to architecture, uh, design elements, affordable housing, those kind of things to get to that higher density. So this is that, that lower density, the RM22, uh, there's 22 units to the acre. Now, we have in the staff report, and again, we're, uh, we're pitching for Zach a little bit here, but the, uh, the total number of units that, because of that reduction in that R1 increase to the, to the west there, the total number of units is going to be...
I thought it was 44 units. Because on page eight, at the very top, it says he decided the request detail and the number of units proposed for developments on the number of acres being rezoned, which will be 22 units an acre on a 2.93 acre, which...
It could be more.
Get up there.
Yes.
Yeah.
22 per acre, so it's almost three acres. So the max, uh, in RM22, if it was three acres, would be 66.
66. And so can, do we have infrastructure that will accommodate that?
We do, yeah.
In that area?
Yeah, it's been reviewed by engineering and the various departments.
Today would never love this dog.
Okay, I, I just didn't see where it had been, where they had...
I want to push on the infrastructure for a little bit.
Yeah.
Can we, can we, is this the full engineering report that they gave you in our, our packet? These three sentences are what's in this?
Those are the comments from engineering.
Yes.
So one of you... That's all we have?
Yes. So when we do planning review meeting, I'm the one who is in charge of those and sends that to the departments and I take what they, what they submit and put those directly into the, uh, the folders for our projects and those go, we rebate them into the staff report. Because so, oh, whoops, sorry, Adam. Oh, go, go for it. I was just gonna say, all of the different departments and the comments that are attributed to them are directly what they sent us.
So, because based upon what this comment says, some turning movements may need to be restricted. Seems like we're going to have to change some traffic patterns because of increased traffic. But the Lotus Report tells us we're going to have a decrease in traffic. So it seems like one's saying one thing and the other one's saying a different thing about how this is going to impact the neighborhood.
I, I think, you know, we're going to have a traffic study is my understanding from reading the report. That, that'll tell us a lot about what those traffic movements are going to be. But generally speaking, you know, you have traffic that's generated by the current geo-zoning in there. You've got a commercial traffic rate. Uh, you've got multifamily, those types of, of uses generate actually on a per-unit basis less, uh, traffic per unit than a single-family home, for example. So we're going to look at that and see what those comparisons are. But if there are restrictive movements that are needed, we'll, we'll work through that in the site planning process. This would just be the, the zone change. But as you read through those other comments, you've got, again, engineering at the top, you've got power, wastewater, as you put on the list there. Uh, each of those have reviewed this, this development and they find that, you know, the infrastructure is, is adequate there with, with some, you know, potential modifications for, for traffic concerns. That'll, that'll be worked through in our site plan review process. We'll, if there needs to be a, uh, change to some of the trending movements or a restriction, that, that'll be part of the conditions of approval for the development.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, so the, when we send them the rezone, a lot of our departments have kind of more general comments based on just like the rezone process. It'll be very different when it goes through the site plan review process.
So I'm going to keep pushing on this traffic for a second because on this one, it's a, do you want to go? Sorry, I kind of cut you off.
No, I just want to say, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering why we should approve this when all, you know, everything hasn't, hasn't been determined, the traffic pattern, those kinds of things, why we should even consider it at this point?
So on the zone change, it's a great question. On the zone change, we're looking at the broad categories of uses that could be allowed, including the densities. And based on those, you know, we, we have infrastructure in place to handle. This is, 4800 South is a major street, Van Winkle is a major street. So we have the basic infrastructure that can handle those types of traffic generation. So what we're really talking about there is those, those site details. We're not talking about traffic that will in any way, you know, blow up an intersection or have a negative impact that, that hasn't been anticipated with the design. We're really talking about those details of, we might have to restrict a, a turn movement in one of the, one of the driveways to maybe ride in, ride out only, to try to address some of these intersection conflicts and those types of things. But the general traffic generation from this night, site is not anticipated to be so much that would create major concerns with those intersections or the street network.
Yeah, I went and drove over there and drove around and, and many of those businesses are not even occupied. And it's very quiet. There's, you know, hardly any traffic being generated from that side. But then if they, you know, if they have how many, how many units, which they could have...
60 plus.
60, yeah.
But one, one way to think about that though, again, is you've got zoning that would allow for traffic right now. So geo has a certain traffic that you would expect if that was developed completely and, and we had full development of that parcel, right? So that, so it's not starting at zero. It's starting at what would that parcel be anticipated to create if it had full build out of the geo-zone? And then we look at the, what would that be anticipated to create full build out within RM25? That's what we're comparing, not, not necessarily what, what is happening today because we all know that that, you know, and particularly we've had some change in circumstances over the last several years with the pandemic. Office uses just don't perform the way they historically have. So the, the actual traffic being generated by the site is not really what we look at in this analysis. It's what could this site generate with its current zoning? What could it generate with the proposed zoning? And are there concerns with those, the differences between those two? And there's not any major concerns with those at this point.
Okay. So this dense, this density in RM25, according to explanations, such as have access to frequent transit. What bus routes or transits do we have in that area? Is it all commuter cars?
Yeah, I'll, I'll pop in my head, I'm not exactly sure. Which routes go around this area?
There are, there's no bus, no bus.
We have route 47, then we have route... So...
Yeah, that's why I said...
So it's not meeting some of the, this zone isn't meeting some of our objectives in this area for where we should put this zone?
Yeah.
We, we're looking at that, that's a good question. See what we've got available there. I'm, I'm not sure if there's a route that runs up and down Van Winkle or not. It may not be, but we'll, we'll find out for you between now and council. The, the council.
There is zero appetite from District 1 residents to approve any high-density zoning.
Same with District 2.
So it's, it's going to be a hard pass on District 1.
And I have a lot of questions still. And we're running out of time and we're really on a short schedule. So I'm going to ask the council, do we want to have them come back in the next committee of the whole and go over some more of our questions? Maybe they will come up with some things that you've asked for and they can bring them back to us? How would you like, how do you feel about that?
I don't think we're ready to vote.
I, I'm, no.
This actually does not go before the council for a vote until February 18.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to discuss it.
So we can, we can have another meeting to...
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll look into the transit question for you.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful during the questions, if you can get those to Chad before the next meeting so he can research them and have a little bit of answers.
Yeah, yeah. Happy to do that.
Just like to surprise you with questions. We're not going to let you know beforehand.
These are, these are great questions.
I mean, if you look at page seven in the second paragraph, it said that Mr. Hughes and Mr. Bird approached the podium. And he said, I don't know which one he, it was he, Mr. Hughes or Mr. Bird. He said they've commissioned a traffic study, which they shared with the neighbors.
Yeah.
What was shared? And then the proposed townhomes would be built to current energy. Okay, that's fine. Then 43...
But we don't assume, we don't assume that they're doing townhomes or anything else.
Right, exactly. Exactly. But, I mean, did, what was his traffic study? What was his finding? And he said he shared it with the neighbors. Well, what did he share with the neighbors?
We have him do it, find that out for you by the next...
Yeah, I would like, yeah. And then, um...
Is this District 3?
Yeah, it is.
And that's another thing.
I know.
Someone's to be there.
Yep.
I really think they should have some input. This is, could be a...
And, and I'd like to ask the question, but I'm going to save it and send it to you guys.
Awesome. Yeah, please send any questions, yes. Having to come back.
Not going to bring it up in... Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, so now we're running right along for the timing. Uh, discussion ordinance amendment 17, section 17 dash 12 dash 070 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to compensation for planning commission members. Uh, it will be Chad Wilkinson that will be presenting. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you. Yeah, this is, just as was described with the, what you just read, is, is this is a proposed increase to the pay for planning commission. So occasionally it's good to review, uh, how much your planning commission is being compensated. Of course, they are, uh, predominantly volunteers. If you look at the per-hour rate that, uh, that someone gets, this is a per-meeting that we're talking about, $50 per meeting. So the time that they spend reading the, the large packets that they get, the time that they spend coming to our meetings, uh, you know, they, they do get some minimal compensation to, to help, help out with those impacts to their, to their financial situation. So, uh, we took a look at, uh, some of the surrounding communities. Uh, you know, we're, we're in the middle somewhere.
Yeah.
As far as, as what we compensate now was proposed. I will just say, uh, anecdotally, that in Layton, you're giving $40 per meeting when I laugh. So it's about, but, you know, pretty close to what we're, we're talking about here. It's, uh, you know, a little bit of an increase, but I think...
Did Layton get a dinner?
Layton never got a dinner. Now, I'd say maybe, maybe once a year we'd have a little training and we'd do a repotting dinner, but, uh, no, we just...
Because these, these planning commissioners, holy moly. They could stay up to four hours or beyond.
They really take, they take a lot of heat for the council and a lot of the meetings.
They do. And especially from citizens or developers or whatever. I, I have absolutely no problem with this at all.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, compensation for, you know, a lot of them will also travel to the sites before the meetings, drive out and take...
Not only once, they could go two or three times to relook and relook and take pictures and go over and go over and go over it and so...
So this really does feel like a, a fair proposal that, uh, you're proposing there that's going for 40 to 50. Uh, again, just to acknowledge that, uh, yeah, gas prices, all those things go up over time. And, um, and so we would be, again, and this was also reviewed by the planning commission and they sent their positive recommendation.
Which I also, if they don't make the meetings, they don't get paid.
That's right.
So we have to remember that, that they, they don't go to the meetings, they don't get paid. But if they go to the meetings, then they get paid.
That's right.
And that's what I read in the findings, so...
And as you pointed out, on a, on a controversial zone change or something, they could be hours at that meeting.
Oh.
Uh, you know, it just depends on what the items are, so...
There was one I was watching, I was up until 1:00 in the morning and I was like, holy moly, how did these people even? I would be asleep. I would have to have food.
So...